All right, we'll have to call the meeting to order at five o'clock and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, we have a roll call. David Bova here, Eric Bowser here, Geraldine Diesel.
Here.
James Kirchner.
Here.
Martha Reesinger.
Here.
Richard Rudolph.
Here.
Terrence McDaniel.
Here.
Everyone is present. Next on the agenda, we have the Board of Education norms, which I am going to go over. The Board will focus on the best interest of students while ensuring that decisions are financially responsible, take into account current data. Consider the impact on staff and align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Genevieve R2 and beyond. The Board will come prepared for Board of Education meetings by reading the Board packets prior to meetings and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected or researched and then shared at the meeting. The Board will speak with one voice after deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting the decision in words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak on behalf of the Board without written authorization from the Board. The Board will act as ambassadors for the St. Genevieve R2 School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the school district. And the Board will listen to understand and communicate to explain, respect and value the diverse perspectives, opinions, and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow Board members, students, their families, employees, patrons, and community members. The Board will be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of nonverbal behaviors, encourage open and honest communication on a consistent and continuous basis, and nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, respect, and connectedness. That are the Board norms. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda of the September 3, 2021 Special Open Session Meeting.
Get it? I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Public Input Session. The Public Input Session will provide stakeholders with an opportunity to offer input on the addition and possible implementation of a mask mandate in the reopening plan. It is important to note that we anticipate many updates to be made to the plan throughout this school year to reflect changing conditions in our community and recommendations from the CDC and DHSS. Each patron who wishes to speak during the Public Input Session must fill out the attached Public Comment Card. Hard copies of the card will be available at the special board meeting. The completed card must be presented to Mr. David Bova, Board President, by 4:45 PM. Each patron who presents a card will receive a minimum, I'm sorry, maximum, don't want to mess that up, of five minutes to speak during the Public Input Session. Dr. Fleege or Dr. Taylor, did you have anything you wanted to add before we began?
I would just like to share that this is not an easy decision, and my hope tonight with this input session is to give all of you the opportunity to share your beliefs and your thoughts in a respectful manner. I take this very seriously. I'm gonna, I am the mother of a 2001 graduate who missed the end of his senior year because of this pandemic. He never gets to have a senior prom, he never gets to have his last day of school, but he did get to have an in-person graduation. I am also the mother of a 2022 graduate who between the beginning of August and the end of October was quarantined three times last year. Once because of a tournament in Jefferson City where one of the other players was positive, the second time she was sitting in class with a mask on behind an individual that was positive. She was five feet nine inches behind the student and the student never turned around and looked at her. And the last time was work. So I think everything that she did, she faced a quarantine. And then we worked with our county health and the CDC changed the guidance on the masks and our county health lets us count Plexiglas as a mitigating measure. So I want you to know, this is not easy for me to sit here and have this discussion with you. The past two weeks with kids not having masks have been wonderful. But the most important thing we need to do is keep kids in school, and I don't know how else to do it right now. I looked at our numbers, and I'll look at them real quick again. Right now, we have 16 positive cases and 18 individuals quarantined. I'm sorry, 82, I can't see. I will tell you, this is going to be continually reevaluated. There are schools to the north and the south of us, Jefferson County, the entire county, is trying something that is being referred to as mask and monitor, meaning that kids who are a contact to a positive case can come to school, but they have to mask, they're monitored by the nurse. They're trying this very experimental approach. I have shared it with county health. Jenny and I really haven't talked about it, but I want to give it a couple, two, three weeks to see how those schools handle it, to see if their nursing staffs are able to do it. And then if it's something that might be an option, I'd like to come back once I have had those conversations with those people to reevaluate what we do with masks. It may go horribly for them, and I don't, at this point, feel very comfortable experimenting with it. So that's why I'm not making that recommendation tonight. So I don't know that I have a whole lot else to say, other than this is not a decision that is easy on any of us, including our staff and you, so. So that is really all I have right now.
And I just want to add, before we bring the public up, a few things about speaking, and then I want to tag on to what Dr. Fleege said. Everyone up here has either had a child or a grandchild graduate from this school district or currently has one in this school district, or has been an employee of this school district. And obviously, in St. Genevieve, we've all had multiple relatives graduate from this school district, and everyone up here cares deeply about the children of this school district. I also had a 2020 graduate who missed her prom, her softball season, and much else. So just keep that in mind when you come to the speaker. All right. But I want to stress, I want to hear what everyone has to say, though. Okay? Mr. Bowser has a clock that will be provided. Once you come up to the podium and speak, he'll start it. You'll have five minutes, please be aware of that. Please address the Board, not the crowd. By all means, maintain decorum, or, you know, your time will be up. If you have something similar to say that someone else said, you can simply say, you know, that you agree with the mandate or you don't agree, you know, for time constraints. I would also appreciate, when you come up to the podium, if you would adjust the microphone so we can hear you. Yes, and of course, state your name, please, when you come up. All right? Thank you. Anybody else on the Board have any questions or comments?
Anybody have a comment?
Yes.
I just want to let you all know, I had two grandsons that graduated that year, and one got to have their graduation, the other one was barely. It was, it was outside and they just walked across the stage and picked up their diplomas. So we definitely think this, and there's, well, I know how I feel about our kids, and we want to protect our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Reesinger. The first Public Comment Card I have is Valerie Holofield.
Somehow I knew I was going to be first.
You were early.
All right, St. Genevieve has been a district that I've been proud to have my kids a part of. I subbed here for two years, and I enjoyed every minute of it. We have a senior and a sixth grader. Did you know that trauma can occur at any age? One can even be affected by trauma from events during or from before birth. Everyone handles trauma differently. Some are more resilient and may experience little to no effects while others are changed completely. Our daughter was born at 11 weeks early and spent 93 days in the NICU. When she came home, it was with oxygen and a G button. I first became aware that she was affected by her early experiences when she was approximately two years old, though I did not realize what I was seeing until more recently. We were shopping and she took shirts from me that I was buying, and the next thing I know, she was screaming in terror. I looked and she had the size tag just dangling off the tip of her finger, and she was just screaming terrified because of a sticker. I took away the sticker and she immediately calmed. Because of the medical ordeals that both of our children have endured when they were younger, they have a lot of anxiety about certain things, especially our daughter. She struggled a lot last year. When she puts on a mask, she can go into a panic attack. It's different sometimes from one time to the next, but her reactions can consist of uncontrollable crying, hyperventilating, gagging, which she has a very sensitive gag reflex anyway, and it leads to dry heaving. I realized this early on and I got her a face shield. However, the face shield brought its own round of challenges. She also has a condition called nystagmus. It's the uncontrollable shaking of the eyes. She can't focus when this happens, they just go back and forth. I don't know how she's ever going to be able to drive at night as an adult. She's been followed by an ophthalmologist her whole life, and earlier this year, she saw a different group of specialists who, they're just stumped. They can't figure out why this happens to her the way it does, and there's nothing they can do. No surgery, medicine, treatment. She had genetic testing, they were looking for anything, and the doctor's advice at this time is to do more genetic testing again in two years and hope that the science catches up. And further, I will not say that it was caused by the face shield, but we have noticed that in the last year, her nystagmus is much worse, and it's happening more and more situations where it didn't happen before. She struggled all through last year to be able to comply with rules and attend school. There were many tearful mornings in our home. So I was, I was overjoyed to hear that masks were optional this year. But the bus is going to be an issue. Moving to middle school has brought additional challenges for my family. We live in Bloomsdale, my husband works in Festus, I work in Farmington. So she was having to ride the bus a lot more than ever. I spoke with her highly pro-mask doctor who's been with her since day one, and she agreed to write for her the one and only letter she's ever written exempting a child from wearing a mask. So I was pretty disappointed yesterday when the doctor called me and let me know that someone from the school called, went behind my back, above my head, to not call me, to not call my husband, and called the doctor. Whoever it was, they should have known better than to call a health professional without a signed release of information. The doctor's office would not speak with them, but let them leave a message. Out of respect for our family, the doctor called saying that normally they would just throw it out, but she wanted to give us a heads up. And from what I can gather, whoever called wanted our doctor's daughter to change her letter of exemption, so that she would have to wear at least a face shield on the bus. It was stated that there's a federal mandate, which there is none. This person stated concern that my daughter would not be able to attend school and would not get an education, somehow insinuating that her parents would neglect her educational needs. If the concern is only the bus, the recommendation from the CDC is not a federal mandate, and it applies to public transportation. Buses for schools are not public. They may be taxpayer-funded for public school students, but the guy down the street, he can't just get, get on a bus and go wherever he wants. It's a private service. So I just ask the Board today to possibly consider some trauma-informed training for all of the employees, maybe in addition to what you already do, and consider it when you decide about this mask mandate and as far as exemptions go. And I ask also in the future that if someone has a question about my daughter's medical history, that they call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Comment Card I have is Gina Bryant.
All right. I've sat by and let you make decisions for my child's health last year. I will do this no more. I have watched my introverted kindergartner hide behind his mask, who now sucks his thumb in public because he can hide his face behind his hand. I have watched my extroverted child become extremely anxious and nervous when it comes to going out in public. Their mental health and their education is too important to let this continue. The problem here is not masks, as they are not made for children to wear. There have been actual studies, which I will email you all after this meeting, that have been shown that there is no significant advantage to children wearing masks in school. The problem is quarantine time, and that is why we sit here today debating over masks, because student attendance is getting too low due to quarantine for close contacts. I do not allow my children to wear masks at school, but I am also ready to accept quarantine when and if they are exposed. Which leads to the problem quarantine again. We do not quarantine someone who is in close contact for other infectious illnesses, flu, colds, hepatitis, TB, chickenpox, measles, and so on. All of these illnesses listed, you can still die from. You can have a sibling or a family member in your own home with the flu and still attend school. Children and parents are not social distancing outside of school and social events. I have even seen many teachers outside when posting on social media with every single one of them no social distancing and no masks. I want to make it clear that I also do not social distance and I do not wear a mask, but if someone is asking my children to wear a mask to protect them, is when I'm going to bring it up. Our children are more at risk from a car ride to school than COVID. We are going, are we going to require them to live at school to prevent them from dying in a car accident? Did you know that child suicide was up in 2020? The first leading cause of death in children is car accidents. The second is suicide. The CDC states that if you're vaxxed, you do not have to quarantine, even though you still get COVID and you can still spread it. The CDC states that if both are wearing masks, you do not have to quarantine, even though masks do not stop the spread of COVID. But if you're a teacher or a faculty or of the school and a close contact to someone positive with COVID, you are essential, and you do not have to quarantine unless you're showing symptoms. Does everyone here know that teachers and staff working right now with your children who are close contacts with people positive with COVID? We do not, we as parents get, do we as parents get to know this information? No, we don't know this. If teachers, if a teacher has a child or spouse at home positive with COVID and the teacher shows no symptoms, they are still working with your child. They do not tell you that your child may be exposed unless the teacher is positive. My children are not at risk for serious illness and definitely not at risk from dying from COVID. I am in support, support of all parents' right to choose what is best for their children. If a parent wants their child to wear a mask, let them. If a parent wants their child not to wear a mask, let them. If a child is sick, stay home. If a parent is sick, stay home. If faculty is sick, stay home. You would not be sitting here talking about forcing a medical device on my children if they could go to school. So let's make children essential, and let's make learning in person essential, and stop quarantining. I lost my place. Let me be a parent and worry about my child's health, and you make sure my child learns the most they can this year. If I choose to keep my children in St. Jen's School, if a mask mandate is put in place, I want to know what the exact measures need to be for my child to not wear a mask. I will not accept the terms that we are, that were put in place last year and let you just keep masking all year long.
Thank you. All right, the next Comment Card I have is Amy Roland.
Hello, my name is Amy Roland, and I've been a school counselor here for 18 years, and I have a seventh grader and a fourth grader. And I feel like I want to start with one thing that we all have in common is the collective grief over all of this that I think everyone has expressed. Everybody has lost something. I look back to my life like July 9, and it was amazing. Like, I was in Texas, I had no masks, they were saying I didn't have to come back with masks. I want the kids to see my face. I want to see their face. And so I felt like, somebody posted earlier, it was a collective euphoria. And about four days before school started, I wanted to stay in complete denial about some of the things that I was hearing and concerns that I had, and two things really shifted to where I really had to open my eyes and see this was going to be a concern this year. One was my father-in-law was hospitalized at Perryville Hospital, and he, he just had an infection, but the option was to transfer him to Kansas City. My 71-year-old mother and father-in-law were going to have to travel to Kansas City where they know no one to get medical care for him if they had to transfer him on. That's a problem, no matter what you're going to the hospital for, that's a huge problem. The second thing was a press conference shared by my sister-in-law at St. Francis Medical Center, and my sister-in-law is the director of all the respiratory therapists there. And I saw humans of no political party, our neighbors, people that we know, begging us to mask up, to get a vaccine. And I could see that they were tired, and I thought about what if it was us as a school district that needed the hospital's help, and we had to beg for people to just try something to alleviate their pain? I just can't imagine what our medical professionals are going through. So I realized I was going to have to, because this affected me so deeply, I realized I was going to have to come to school with a mask, and that was a very painful decision. I knew I was going to be a minority, but I knew it was something that I had to do. And so I want to take where I am today and why I'm here through the lens of Leader in Me, and Leader in Me is initiative that we have at both of our elementaries. And the very first habit is habit number one, be proactive. And I feel like we have this amazing opportunity today to be proactive. I feel like if we wait, we could be reactive, and there could be some things that would be really hard for us to face moving forward that I don't even want to entertain. So I want to be able to, when and if, let me back up. I don't want our hospital to come to us in desperation. I don't want to have to react to that. I want to be proactive, and I want to do this for them. And I want, when the kids ask if we come back with this mask mandate, and they say, "Why are we wearing masks, Mrs. Roland?", I want to say, "Because we're being proactive." And we are a community of beautiful intentions that have always come together, and that's what we're doing now. So I think that's the opportunity we have, and that's the opportunity that I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Comment Card I have is Jimmy Holofield.
Well, I'm not going to take up too much of your time, I'm going to get right to the point. I am against mask mandate, and so-called because it prevents the CCP virus, which I'll just refer to as virus from here on out. I know there's people that are sick, I know there have died, I got a 95-year-old mom I can't even see because of the virus, they're shut down the place. Well, anyway, I respect all medical doctors, nurses, people in the medical field, and I think they're doing a great job. 12 years ago, I was diagnosed with cancer, and through their efforts and treatments and care, I'm still here. God bless them. But as far as the mask goes and is concerned, I spent 10 years in military service, eight years active duty, and I was trained about how to wear a mask. I spent 31 years out here at Mississippi Lime Company. Every year, they trained us on about how to wear a mask, how to put it on, how to fit it. And you know the thing in comedy they taught? They said, "If that mask is not fitted properly, and that mask is not sealed, it's not going to do you any good." And the way I see people wearing masks and how their children pull on them and all that good stuff, might as well wear a coffee filter. It's my position that if you want to wear a mask, by all means, wear a mask. I'm not stopping you, but don't force other people to wear a mask that don't want to wear a mask. It's not right, probably not even legally. If you really believe the mask can keep the virus out, maybe you ought to do a little bit more study up on it. Years ago, when I was growing up, I had an aunt, her name was Vester, and I had a cousin, his name was Junior, and we'd go to town, drive into town for a good time. And you know what she always told us? She said, "Wear clean underwear in case you get in an accident." Think about it, it makes just about as much sense as you telling me to wear a mask for my kids. By the way, I have grandkids, nephews and nieces here at school, and I will support them with everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next Comment Card I have is Lance Meyer.
I'm Lance Meyer. I just always say, my family doesn't support masks or the shot, but we just like to keep it optional. And how many kids in this school have been wearing masks and how many have not been wearing masks? So I should tell you what the kids want. Thanks.
Thank you. Next Comment Card I have is Emily Gack.
Hi, I'm Emily Gack. My daughter attends first grade, and then soon to be hopefully three behind her. I'm both saddened and disappointed in our school district, as we haven't even completed two weeks of school or two, I guess only a few days anyway, not technically 10 days, and already trying to implement mask-wearing of our children. I would be lying if I didn't say, I didn't see this coming. I want to first start with repeating a few things directly from the CDC website, along with a few follow-up comments or questions on those matters. Face shields, which some of you are sporting them today, they are not recommended. Evaluation of face shields is ongoing, but effectiveness is unknown at this time, direct quote from the CDC. Dr. Julie Fleege's emails to families state that the mask mandate would be implemented in a quote, "As was in place during the previous school year," end quote. I find this to be an odd statement considering many faculty and staff were not required to wear face coverings, they were only required to wear a face shield, and as I stated, goes against CDC recommendations. The next quote, "Do not touch the mask when wearing it. If you have to often touch or adjust your mask, it doesn't fit you properly, and you may need to find a different mask or make adjustments." I don't know about you guys, but my kindergartner last year touched her mask repeatedly, and to me, hand washing is way more important than the mask on her face. Children of this age don't have the mental capacity to understand these things. You can repeat it all day long. You can repeat it all day long, same way I tell them they can't get a cookie at night. They don't understand. How many of you can truly say that you have appropriately, inappropriately touched and adjusted your mask because of the incorrect fit? I know every single time I touch a mask, and I'm an adult and know that I should wash my hands after. That's why there are signs at the doctor's office that say, "Wash your hands if you touch a mask." How many of these kids actually have access to a sink to go wash their hands like, "Oh, I touched my mask"? You're literally going to have everyone running to the water, or the faucet, every, every freaking minute. Excuse my freaking. Many children don't have the proper fit of their masks. And how many of you can truly say you wash your hands every single time you touch yours? Do you really expect a child to remember these things? Next item, "Masks are not a substitute for social distancing. Masks should still be worn in addition to staying at least six feet apart, especially when indoors around people who don't live in your household," directly from the CDC. Last year's, last year's implementation of masks, face shields and social distancing were not met. It's not six feet or masks-wearing, it's both, which is contradicting to what your intentions were last year and for a potential mask mandate this year. Moving on to some real-life situations that have already occurred this year which go against the reopening plan that was been, that was put in place by the district. Open House for Elementary that I attended, and I even called and talked to Ms. Gack herself about my concerns. Per the opening plan pushed out, blow over the rules, in case you forgot, I'm not repeating all of them, just the ones that technically applied to this event. There is a, excuse me, "The sign-in process for visitors will include filling out a simple health screening questionnaire." This did not happen. Visitors must wear face coverings when inside district and school buildings during school hours and at events held after school hours in classrooms. Visitors were required to wear masks, yet faculty and staff were allowed to wear face shields, which is against CDC recommendations. The schools will keep accurate records of all visitors who have been inside our buildings in case an outbreak occurs to assist with contact tracing. This includes areas in the school that were visited and the time the visitor, visitor entered the school and exited the school. The only thing required at Open House was a signing in the classroom. I didn't have to put in an in-and-out time. They didn't ask anywhere else I had been in the building. And it wasn't other areas. All visitors will be instructed to stay six feet apart from other visitors or personnel in office. I was directly within six feet of multiple faculty and staff members and no one asked otherwise and no signage was present. It seems to me that the rules only apply when the school wants them to apply. Now I ask you this, where are the results of the survey that were sent out to families before August 6th? I'd love to see the results of that. What is the majority? Why are you holding this special meeting where it doesn't give ample time or notice to families, especially on a holiday weekend when a lot of people are out of town? This doesn't seem fair to those to be able to hear how many, sorry, this doesn't seem fair to be able to hear the many voices of others' views and concerns. The FDA does list face masks as a medical device. If a mask mandate is implemented, where is the exemption form for people to fill out so our child isn't forced to wear a medical device to school? I now like to focus on the school board and our St. Genevieve Health Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is Andrew Schimmel? All right. I'm sorry.
My name is Andrew Schimmel and I'd just like to start off saying thank you for the opportunity to speak and I appreciate everyone's attendance. I think I'd like to keep it short. I just want to ask that you keep the mask mandate optional, basically. Keep freedom of choice to all the parents. Let them be the parents, please. I think it was the right plan. I'm sure it was hard to come up with that in the reopening plan and I appreciate the effort that was put, that went into that decision. I also believe that some of the motions that we got to see from the beginning from the board members was a great display that you knew that was the right choice and I think everyone supported it and I just ask that we keep that. I think everyone knows what the right choice is, but I know this is difficult, so my sympathy is with you for that. But also, I understand one of the comments earlier about being proactive to try to get ahead of anything, but I mean, let's be realistic, we got to balance decisions with the risk, right? The benefit and the risk. We don't drive four miles an hour on the highway, even though that's absolutely safer. There'd be no fatalities at four miles an hour, that's walking speed, right? But we don't do that, right? We got to, we got to weigh the risk with the reward. And there's no downsides to driving four miles an hour on the interstate. It's completely safer. But the mask mandate with the children, we really don't know the downsides. I mean, I'm, I'm not confident that there's been enough evidence or even enough time to study that if it's even been studied. Even if I saw the results in this political climate, the news the way it is, I'm not sure I'd believe it. So what I'm getting at is, again, just keep it optional. Please don't force anything on anyone that they don't, they don't want. I've talked to my kids about homeschooling option because I take this pretty serious. I mean, looking at their risk of COVID, I would much rather have them go to school without, without a mask than have to wear a mask the whole time. By now, everyone has pretty much had the option to get a vaccine for their protection, right? Because the mask, we all know, it just mitigates it, it doesn't remove the risk. So assuming everyone is going to get this because there's no foolproof way to guarantee you're not going to get it, then assuming that you just got to do, you had 18 months basically to either get the vaccine, get your, your, your physical fitness and your immunity system in order, then do the best you can, right? So everyone's had ample time. I know there's some exceptions, but I believe policies like this need to be made for the majority and not the, not the, not the exceptions, right? The exception to the rules of saying for a reason. I believe that you all can speak to it better than I can, but from what my children tell me, most of the kids aren't wearing a mask. That does tell you where the majority's wishes lie. And let's see, I think that's about all I got. Yep, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next comment card I have is Jerry Muttongrass.
Hi, I'm Gary Grass. Just want to start out by saying I don't want to be on that side of the table making these decisions. I'm glad I'm on this side. I'd like to put a little different twist on everything I've been hearing so far. So we have a son that is high-risk. So we're going to do anything that we can in our powers to keep him safe. But at the same time, we have limits of what we can do because last year, you know, it was a little bit scary for him or for us with him. So three-fourths of the school year last year, he was at home. That didn't work out very well, even with virtual, anybody could have tried their darndest to get him to do what he needed to do. But as a second grader, that's not very easy to do, especially with mom and dad at home telling him what to do. We can't do that again this year. It won't, it can't for him because he's already behind. If we have to take him again and do that again because, you know, the risk gets too, too high here, we don't know what will happen with him. Therefore, we have to do what we can to make sure he is safe. So my pitch is, it's, it's, you know, about all for one, one for all. To an extent, I get it. But, you know, it, it just can't. You know, as a parent, like I said, if a parent with a high-risk child, it's completely different than a parent that, you know, isn't in that situation. I had a bunch of other stuff and now it's gone, but I, I, one of the things I've heard and it's, I guess maybe hearsay, I don't, I'm not sure, as far as a child being quarantined, not being required to be quarantined if they're exposed either at school or outside of school and they can still come to school even though they've been exposed, I, I don't agree with that. And for the exact reasons that I've just said, and my child's not the only child, it is high-risk. I know there's probably people out there saying, "Well, if you're there at high-risk, then you treat them differently." It's up to you. It's your, it's your problem. But it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be all our problem. And I don't mean that to say other people, it should be a problem to them. I'm saying, to an extent, can't we all work together? I mean, let's be honest, that's the only way this thing is going to get brought down is if we stick together. And I get it, not all the kids are going to wear their masks all the time at school. I get that. But isn't six hours of wearing it in school better than one or not at all? And, you know, like I said, I'm glad I'm on this side of the table, not that side of the table. I respect all of you for what you have to go through, not just here, or not just now, but throughout the school year. But, you know, that's my plug and, you know, our little guy's doing great this year, being here full-time and it's working out great. Probably, you know, he has to be here. He has to be here, just like any other one. Any other child that's at that age, they have to be here and I think it needs to be at whatever cost, so we need to keep those kids here. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Gary. Next comment card I have is Jared Barr.
Mr. Bova, my name is Jared Barr, Board of, Board Members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you guys. What's, was unclear, and normally I would have some prepared remarks, but it, as commented, has been very short notice for this hearing, which is disrespectful of the parents here. And I, and I do wish that we'd had different opportunities there. What I want to say is that it's not clear, both from everything that the school has presented in their meeting notice and from everything that we know is whether there is spread of COVID-19 within classrooms, where is happening at? We know that our older children are working, they are hanging out with each other. And so what good does the mask even do? That's not something that's clear. What we do know is that masks have negative consequences. We know that as of today, the children under the age of 18 having died from COVID-19 involving COVID-19, not just from COVID-19, 400 out of 74 million children in this nation. What we know is that children need to see faces to socially develop. And so our elementary students are going to be significantly impacted for, for the duration of their lives because of not being able to see faces. What we know is that learning foreign languages is very difficult if you can't see someone's mouth. What we know is that poor air quality, including the higher concentrations of CO2 from masks, affect cognitive abilities, including testing among all persons, not just children. Give you some examples from my own children. So I have seven children. Three of them are currently in the school district. I had a preschooler who has some weakness of speech, let's say. And so he's difficult to understand under the best circumstances. With the mask, it becomes impossible to understand him at times unless you're regularly communicating with him. So what happens? He went mute in school, did not have that engagement with his peers and with his teachers. What we, he, he is getting better this year in kindergarten. He wouldn't eat school lunch because he was afraid of taking his mask off inappropriately and being scolded. He still doesn't eat school lunch. I don't know how that's going to be repaired. I had a daughter who is completely terrified to be in public because of the influence of the school policies from last year. And so we have to really consider what children we're trying to protect. There's no evidence that COVID-19 causes significant illness in the vast majority of our children. Our adults who are at risk, anybody over the age of 30 should be getting the vaccine. That's their choice. Those students who are at high risk, and they, they do exist, people with asthma, things of that nature, they can wear a properly fitted in 95 and be trained how to wear that. These things are not going to do it. These things only make you feel better if you are in support of masks or they cause behavioral issues if you're not in support of a mask. And then I would just ask you guys to not only consider your responsibility of holding the school administration to account for properly teaching our children, but also you've been elected to be fiscal, fiscally responsible and good stewards of public dollars. In light of the, the recent lawsuit in the Columbia School District from our Attorney General Eric Schmidt, would it be appropriate to even test whether you have the legal authority to implement a mask mandate and, and risk having to then undergo a lawsuit against the state of Missouri? I know that from your tax hearing, you guys are already anticipating a significant legal expense and you guys have reduced the task, the tax revenues that are coming on. At what position then are you doing more irreparable damage to the school financially, let alone to our students' own behavior and, and ability to learn? I appreciate you guys for, for your time and encourage you to think before you act.
Thank you, sir. The next comment card I have is Becky Long.
Good evening. My name is Becky Long. I want to thank you first for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am a parent of three young children, two of whom are students here at St. Genevieve Elementary School. I have a kindergartner and a third grader. And I know this has been a scary and uncertain time for all of us. As a mother, you begin to worry about your child and their health and safety from the moment they're born, even from the moment you find out you'll be bringing them into the world. You worry about what you eat, how it will affect them while you're carrying them in your body. You worry what to feed them when they arrive and whether it's the best thing for them. You worry about the kind of car seat you choose and whether it will keep them safe in an accident. You spend hours mitigating risks on their behalf. Are the toys we purchase safe enough? Are they wearing a helmet when they ride their bicycle? Did they put on a coat today? Are they choosing good friends? Did we remember to give them their vitamins? I could go on for hours. Parenthood is a never-ending barrage of making sure that what we do is on the best behalf of our children. It's for this reason that I stand before you now, because it's my job to make sure my children are protected. When this pandemic began last March, I don't think anyone in this room dreamt we'd be here 18 months later still battling this terrifying virus. Yet, here we are. Unfortunately, over the course of the last year and a half, this virus has brought out the best and the worst of people. It has turned into a political nightmare and has already caused this country 656,386 human lives, 4.5 million globally. As of yesterday, there were 102 cases in our little town alone and we have now been identified as a hotspot. Since the spread of the Delta variant, 20% of cases nationwide in the last week have been in children. You've all heard the statistics, but the statistics are real people. No, you're fine.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. But these statistics are real people and we cannot lose sight of that. I've lost an uncle to this virus. I have rushed my husband to the emergency room with an O2 level of 86, pale as a ghost, unable to walk, and I had to leave him there not knowing if I would bring him back home to my children. I have felt the effects of this illness myself. I've also brought home a baby born two months early after a month-long stay in the NICU, still attached to oxygen, and I watched her tiny, three-pound, 15-ounce body struggle to breathe. I have sat in a steamed-up bathroom with my eight-year-old during an asthma attack, praying that his inhaler would kick in and let him breathe. I would never want to watch my child or anyone else's go through that again. To watch your child struggle to breathe is a layer of pure hell that I would not wish on my worst enemy. It's for that reason that I'm asking you tonight to put a mask mandate in place in our schools. COVID is not just- COVID is not just the flu. It is not a made-up virus used to manipulate politics. It is real, and it is killing our families, our neighbors, and our friends. We cannot stand by while it kills our children. This is a risk that we can mitigate. My children wear masks when we are in public places with no issue. If you ask them, they will tell you. It keeps them safe, and it keeps the people that they love safe. It is truly that simple. We have to take the politics out of this discussion and do what's best to protect those we love. As board members, you have the ability to do what is best and what is right. And I'm asking you tonight to please make that decision for those who are too little to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is Stacy Gegg.
Hello, I'm Stacy Gegg. First of all, I want to thank you all for calling this special session. It shows your understanding of the urgency of this matter, which I, as a parent, really appreciate. As you all know, I sent an email earlier in the week when my son was put on quarantine for being a close contact, so that is happening in the classrooms. Before I get too far into what I'd like to say, I want to revisit part of the reopening plan that was sent out mid-August, stating, "While face coverings are not currently required for students and employees, the St. Genevieve R2 School District strongly encourages students and staff, especially those who are unvaccinated or immunocompromised, to wear face coverings when unable to socially distance at least six feet upon returning to school." I'd like to believe that the thought process behind the decision to not mandate masks included the assumption that parents and guardians would take the encouragement seriously and mask their children. Unfortunately, this did not happen, and here we sit, just two weeks into the school year. The Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services had, when I checked earlier today, reported 16 current COVID cases in the St. Gen R2 boundary area in the last 14 days. So, more than one case a day. And your own website, the St. Gene R2 School District, at the time I checked it, indicated 14 confirmed cases in the district resulting in 78 quarantines, 40 of those being in elementary. This is a good time to note that the vast majority of our elementary school kids are too young to get the vaccine. They don't have that option. They don't have that protection, even if their parents would choose that for them. These numbers are no surprise to me. I can only speak for my child's classroom when I report that they are not being socially distanced the way the classroom is arranged. I'd imagine the cafeteria might be set up the same way. At the time I was in the classroom, there is no plexiglass or any other type of barriers between the students, who again are not six feet apart. Teachers have the option of wearing masked face shields, which, as mentioned earlier, are not recognized as affected by the CDC. Masks are required on buses. I feel like the same thing should be carried forth in the classrooms. When I send my child to school, I've always done so with confidence. I had faith that he will be kept as safe as possible, and I don't currently have that faith. And unfortunately, it's not for lack of the teacher's care, any staff, or even the board members. It's the people in the classroom. Even though he wears his mask with no other precautions, he is still at risk. We found out Wednesday evening that he was exposed, and he is currently quarantined. My kid loves school, loves being at school, loves learning, and was upset when we had to tell him he's out for two weeks. Sure, he might not be missing out on munch, but what if we had visited his 90-year-old, 91-year-old great-grandmother at her assisted-living facility, as we do often, before finding out he was exposed? What if he was immunocompromised? I understand that the what-ifs can go on forever, but these are all things that constantly run through my mind as a parent and as someone trying to be responsible. Even though he wears his mask, he's protecting others, not himself. Who's going to protect him? You enforce, you know, we talk about dress codes and things of that nature. It seems like masks could be enforced in a similar fashion. Wearing a mask isn't fun. The suggestion of a mask mandate is not made lightly. This is necessary to protect our kids. It is necessary to get through the school year. We all need to do what is necessary to protect each other. I've worked through the entire pandemic. I've been required to wear a mask at all times unless I'm eating. I get tested every single day at my job. It's not fun, it's awful. Why do I tolerate this? Because it's necessary, and I'm willing to do what I have to in order to protect my family and the people I come in contact with. Sure, masks don't guarantee that you won't get COVID. However, they have been proven to reduce transmission when a COVID-positive person is wearing one. A study completed by a CDC-funded lab predicted that elementary schools without either masks or regular testing could see 75% or more children infected with COVID in the first three months of school. With masks, that prediction goes down to 22%. I urge you to ask yourselves, who are you protecting? Who is vulnerable, and whose well-being should we be considering in this decision to instate a mask mandate? I'm hopeful that you will hear and think about the information presented to you tonight and make the safest decision for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is Jennifer Cox.
Good evening. Hello, my name's Jennifer Cox. Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to speak with you again tonight. I came and spoke with you before the reopening plan was announced. I'm the parent of two girls, one in fourth grade who's nine, one in sixth who's 11, so neither of them are eligible for a vaccine at this time. I'll be honest that the mask optional policy outlined for the reopening plan was a pretty big disappointment to me, especially as the numbers started to rise right as school began. These last 18 months have not been easy for anyone. Everyone is tired of wearing masks, everyone, me included. And I barely wear mine because I work at home. But we should know by the data from the last year in our own district that masking works. It works to keep kids in school where it's known that they learn more effectively. Is it 100% effective? No, but nothing is, not even the vaccine. But it's the least we can do to be proactive to prevent this risk or mitigate this risk to our children and our staff. The Delta variant, it's been shown, I know just from talking to other parents, it's shown to affect children more frequently. Becky commented on the 20% of new cases are children. This thing is coming after our kids. The original strain didn't do that. We didn't have to deal with that as much, but things are changing, things are evolving. We don't want waiting to be reactive to this. It will mean that one of our children or one of our staff will die or be permanently disabled by this virus. I work at a company, I work with ADA, so the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have had more people permanently disabled by this virus. I have a guy in Texas who threw a blood clot, lost both legs. This will happen to our community if we don't take action. I've been talking to other parents in other school districts around our area. A friend of mine has kids in Warren County. There are a larger population of students than St. Genevieve, but they also opened as mask optional in August. They've only been in school for seven days, and as of yesterday, they had nearly 350 students in quarantine and 22 positives. More than half of those students were in the middle school, where a lot of those kids are not eligible for the vaccine. Compare that to Kirkwood School District in St. Louis, much, much larger by population than we are. Masks have been required since they started on August 24th. In the entire district, they have only had four positive cases. And nobody's quarantined because everyone's in a mask. With these numbers, why would we not mandate masks? If we don't, we're just going to see more quarantines. Half of our kids are going to be quarantined by the time we're four weeks in. I hope that these numbers show you that masking works. They work to slow the spread of the virus. They work to keep our kids in school where we know they learn more effectively. I urge you to make the decision to make masks mandatory when not able to social distance for the good of our children and the staff, but also for the good of the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment card I have is Kristi Clegg-Horn.
Hello.
Hello.
Normally, I see you under much better circumstances. We're celebrating things like the polar plunge and the victories of Special Olympics, and unfortunately, we're here under other circumstances today. My name is Kristi Clegg-Horn, and I'm a special education teacher here at St. Genevieve R2. I'm here today to speak on my own behalf, and I'm not speaking for anyone else other than myself. But I am coming here also as a sister of someone who was a high-risk student at one time, and that she was actually a student in my classroom before I was a teacher. It's no secret that teaching or working in schools has proven to be a difficult task the past few years. And since the beginning of this pandemic, the demands placed upon teachers, administrators, school board members, support staff, has been exponential. And yet, we show up and we do what we can for our students. The stress that our students are under is something that we possibly cannot understand, but we show up for them and we help them through daily. Currently, our students are witnessing death and tragedy daily. Some of them are experiencing loss of loved ones firsthand. Teachers have lost family members and friends. Personally, I lost a 40-year-old friend just this past weekend due to COVID. She was not high-risk. She was healthy. Our students are witnessing, oh, sorry, I already said that. I believe that one thing that most of us agree upon is that our students have more learning opportunities when they are within the physical boundaries of the school. I hope today that decisions are made to slow the spread of COVID and to keep our children in school. All children have the right to a free and appropriate education. Not mandating masks at this time is an exclusionary idea. It prevents students with severe illness who are at high risk of dying due to COVID from being able to equally participate in school. I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous, I don't know why. In fact, the ACLU has begun filing lawsuits against states like South Carolina where mask mandates were banned by state leadership. It is a violation of civil rights to exclude these students. It would illegally force parents of students with underlying health conditions to choose between their student's health and their education. Our Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardonja, is also ready to investigate those allegations against states. But there's a simple solution here that we can do to keep all of our children and staff in school. It's science-based, and the majority of medical experts agree that masking up when social distancing is not possible can help prevent the spread of COVID. Together, all of us can keep all of our students in school. We can decrease the burden on our healthcare system, and hopefully, we can all look back at this in 10 years and be reminded that our kindness and empathy in this situation that we use in our decision-making was not a sign of weakness, but as a sign of empathy and caring for all. But it will be that we did this so that everyone is able to participate. When we exclude just one person, we're no longer a family. We're not a community. Finally, I'd like to add that there have been some concerns and that traditional masks do not work for some of you or for your students. I have a variety of ideas, things that cover mouth and noses, that I may be able to recommend for you. If we work together, I believe that everyone will be able to find solutions. Thanks.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is Rachel Stewart.
Okay, so I'll start by saying hi. I would jump over and give you a hug if I could. I don't envy the decisions that you guys have to make and what you've been through over the past 18 months. So thank you for that. We just moved back to St. Gene County last year. My son is only in pre-K. He'll be five in October, and I have a 14-month-old. So I don't even know what this decision looks like for the pre-K kids, but I am here because that's how passionate I am about it. And I have spent an embarrassing amount of time over the past year, I would say. I've come a long way in my opinions and, you know, the research that I've done and things that I've learned about COVID and masks and the vaccines and all of that. So when people say, "Do your own research," that is me. It consumes probably 90% of my mind every day, and it is draining. So that's why I'm here. I'm not discounting the virus at all. I understand that people have really been getting sick. Some people, you know, it really is a huge concern. And with variants changing, there is, you know, a risk to our kids. But I am here to advocate for our kids and what is really the best for them and in the terms of masks and what, you know, studies that I've shown. You hear people saying like this study and this study, so I don't even know how you keep it all straight and determine what's real. I do have two examples of randomized controlled studies. One posted in BMJ found, they did a study on 15 hospitals with the healthcare workers, and 97% penetration, they found, of viral particles through cloth masks, 44% penetration in surgical masks. So at that point, you know, what is the mask doing? With the cloth masks, there was 13 times more likely to experience an infection. The conclusion of that study is moisture retention and pore filtration might result in an increased risk of infection, and they were not recommending masks. There's another study that the CDC did that was a randomized controlled study, not just an observation, an actual randomized controlled study. 85% of symptomatic patients wore masks regularly. 4% of those patients did not wear masks. So those are just a couple of examples. I know there's hundreds out there. For everyone saying that they work, there's one that says that they don't. So, you know, but you guys gave the opportunity for us to come up and share examples. So, you know, I asked my husband, I'm like, "I would rather be here having dinner with you guys, but I feel like I need to go." So, excuse me, that is why I'm here. So again, I'm not discounting the virus. I understand that there is a risk for people getting sick. What I'm here to ask is, at what point are our solutions becoming more of a problem than the initial issue itself? Are masks the answer? Like, I don't believe that they are. I am asking you guys to consider that and consider any other possible solution. I understand that this really isn't so much about the masks, but it is about keeping the kids in school, which I totally agree with. And how do we do that? How do we keep them in person? So I don't know what the rule is on, or the rule came from for the vaccine, or, sorry, not the vaccine, but the exposure, that if those parties aren't wearing masks, then you have to quarantine. I feel like that's kind of the root of issue. We're trying to keep people out of quarantine. So I don't know what political implications are involved with that, what mandates are coming from the state is saying like that's what public schools have to do. But I'm just here to ask that we consider any other alternate solution that is logical, that would make sense for the kids, that doesn't pose any more risk to their mental or physical well-being. There are no long-term studies. It's impossible to have long-term studies at this point of what affects masks will have on kids, their social abilities, their ability to learn how to read by seeing their teachers' mouths and speaking. You know, just my own four-year-old, in the comments that he's making about just having the mask in his backpack, they asked us to put it in his backpack just in case. And I'm seeing behavior from him that is alarming to myself and my husband of, you know, what having this mask on him is doing and how he feels like he's possibly making everybody around him sick. You know, so I just ask that you consider, please, any other options besides the mask mandate. I'm not going to have time to do the last thing, but thank you.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is Sarah Greither.
Hi, my name is Sarah Greither. I have two elementary students, both girls. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and thank you for your service during this difficult time. The district did an excellent job with COVID protocols last year. Masking prevented many kids from illness and quarantine. masks versus quarantine is required if one kid is wearing a mask and the other is not. I can imagine the optional mask policy is creating a mountain of unnecessary work for school administrators. As a healthcare worker, I have been wearing a mask for one year and five months. Our patients have also been wearing a mask. They work. I have had one coworker become ill, and that was an illness outside of the job. I am tired. I am tired of wearing a mask. We are all tired of wearing them. However, this does not change the fact that this is the best way to protect our young children. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics both recommend masking. I ask you to please consider changing your policy to mask required. Please keep in mind, there are far fewer pediatric beds than adult beds in hospitals. Your child could have a non-COVID-related issue and not have treatment available due to lack of staffing or lack of beds. It is everyone's responsibility to slow this virus as much as possible until hospital beds are available again. I would like to leave you with a parting thought. This is a chest X-ray of a healthy child's lungs. This is a chest X-ray of a child with COVID pneumonia. It is hard to breathe with all that gunk in your lungs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The final comment card I have is Chrissy Gegg.
Hello. I'm Chrissy Gegg. I'm here as a parent and also as a representative of the Health Department. I have three kids that are in the school district. I have one middle schooler and two kids in elementary. My children are here for the exceptional teaching and opportunities that are provided, neither of which they can take part in if they are not here. We cannot continue to allow this to happen. Quarantine can be avoided by masking all students. There is so much about this virus that's out of our control. The one thing that we can control is masking children at school. The bottom line is, these kids need to be in school for their education and for their mental health. I also have concerns for the school nurse, who is going to help the child that is having an asthma attack or has fallen while the school nurse is busy determining close contacts to positive cases in the school. Individuals can have mild symptoms in the beginning that are not easily identified as COVID. For example, headache, runny nose, stomach ache. The student continues to attend school. Two days later, the child starts with fever and congestion and is diagnosed with COVID. At the Health Department, sometimes it is four days between the child's onset of symptoms and use, and us receiving the positive result. If all children are masked, everyone is protected, and nothing needs to be done. Everyone stays in place, keeps learning, which is our goal. If everyone is not masked, the school determines close contacts. Even one child being sent home is too many. When other measures like distancing and Plexiglas are not sufficient in preventing children from having to quarantine, then everyone must mask. I don't think parents realize there is nothing stopping children from being quarantined over and over again throughout the school year. Even though your child may wear a mask every day, all day, that does not prevent them from being a close contact if the positive individual does not have a mask on. My hope in sharing this information is to shed light on the process. It is not perfect. There are many factors that are out of, out of our control. COVID is not going away. The recommendations and guidelines from the CDC and DESI are not going to change at this point. Simply masking these children would help prevent close contacts at school. The children are used to wearing a mask. It's become a routine for them. I, as a parent, am willing to do anything to keep my kids in school. We have no choice at this point. The students must be masked. We protect our children in so many ways, so why not make sure that they stay in school? Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to add that I, the board received, I believe, one, two, three, four, five emails in the past, with comment cards in the past 24 hours. I would say four were in favor, one against a mask mandate. Unless you'd like me to read them aloud?
Put to you.
I'm fine with that statement. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Dr. Flee?
I think I said it at the beginning. This is difficult. I'd rather see their faces, but it's more important to me that they're at school. So?
I just want to add a thank you. There were some heart-wrenching stories told on both sides of this issue, some heart-wrenching that goes on up here, and I appreciate all of you, no matter your opinion. And I thoroughly enjoy the opportunity for our school to teach our kids. I do want to say two things. Attorney General Eric Schmidt came up, and I just want to put it out there. If the state legislature wants to resolve this problem, they can resolve it. They can tell us what to do. But they haven't. So here we are. This is what's called local control. I mean, I could answer some other questions, but as has been put so politely tonight, there are studies on both sides of this issue. I can tell you, the members of this board have heard from many people, have read several, I know I've read several summaries and conclusions of studies, and talked to many employees, many students, many parents. And there are, all of you are on both sides of this issue, so it is a difficult issue. And I appreciate all your comments. Does anyone else on the board have anything to say?
I do have some questions. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Dr. Flee and Dr. Taylor for opening this up, for our parents coming and sharing. As everyone said, it's so, it's so emotional, it's so taking a strain on all of us for many months now, and sometimes you just, you just don't know what the right thing is. You think you do, so you just keep reading research and reading research, and as Mr. Boba said, you find, you keep finding things that contradict what you may have read at a different point in time. So I want to thank everybody for sharing their viewpoints tonight with all of us. My question would be that the CDC offers many recommendations, and we do follow some of those recommendations, but we don't follow all of them. The current viewpoint clearly indicates that the best way to shield children from COVID-19 is eye exposure to adults who have been vaccinated. But, you know, we can't control, if parents are vaccinated, of course, or the community members, and at this point, we haven't mandated that students 12 and over, or employees be vaccinated, but that, that is probably perhaps the most powerful indicator to slow transmission down. In my own research, I, I have not found conclusive evidence that masking children truly does prevent the transmission of COVID. It does with adults, because adults wear their face masks properly for the most part. They don't touch it as much as children do, all those other things. So that is the one thing that weighs on my mind, because when we look at our rubric, the two criteria that our quarantine rubric is made of is that the two criteria are fully vaccinated, which kids 12 and under can't be, so that isn't, that isn't working for them, and wearing a proper face mask. In other words, wearing it the way it's supposed to be worn, and hey, they're kids. They, they don't. They don't. So I do at times question how effective their masks are. So my question is, is perhaps for Dr. Flee, is this, are we using this because the CDC recommended it, and it's what we think at this point the safest way to determine quarantines? Is it up for amending or reviewing or discussing?
That does follow CDC guidelines, and we actually saw it from a few other school districts.
Right.
And so we borrowed it, because it seemed to be a quick and easy visual, because we know most people aren't going to read the entire reopening plan.
Right.
But it was a quick and easy way to get the information out there.
And would we ever, as a district or a board, look at mask mandates at one grade level or one building versus another? You know, I mean, is it going to be, you feel, across the board? Or, well, we might say something different through elementary or secondary?
That has been discussed, because, you know, that vaccine age, vaccination age of 12 and up, that is an option for those students, whereas 12 and under, it's not. So we have discussed it. On the St. Jen campus, it's a little more difficult, because as you see the flow, you know, middle school, high school, elementary. Can we manage it if we would just implement a mask mandate in one building? I believe so. But, you know, we do have a lot of seniors and juniors who are going to elementary, middle school classrooms as they could that teach and try to get their A-plus hours. We would just need to make sure that they, let's say, the mask mandates in the elementary, that they would have to mask up before they go into class.
I do believe, as many of you stated tonight, it's kind of here to stay. I think we're going to see different variants come up. I don't think COVID is going anywhere. And although I do think masking the children is possibly, probably helpful, I think we do have to ask ourselves, and one of our parents said that tonight, with how, with what time limits are we going to ask kiddos to wear masks most of their childhood? You know, for, right now, the CDC's data shows that although it is a serious and real threat, we know that and we hear it, and we've been touched. At least the statistics I found on the CDC website, and I use the CDC website for most of my data, because it is kind of our go-to site as a school district. I feel like we, you know, use, seem to use that quite a bit. The death rate for children 0 to 19 is three per 100,000. And for individuals 20 to 49, which is the age of most of our students' parents, it's two per 10,000. So I thought it was much higher than that. And when you hear people speak, you would think that it seems higher than that, but that was what was on the CDC website. So again, that's not, doesn't seem to be that giant of a risk, right? I mean, even three deaths per 100,000 is too many, is too many. But I don't know. I just, it's hard to ask our children to keep masking for an indefinite amount of time. My hope would be that if we do go with the mask mandate, that we set some kind of reevaluation period. Okay, we're going to try this again for 30 days or until the next board meeting, but we're not going to just do it indefinitely without that, like Dr. Flee said, that constant revisiting, because I, I think it's here, I think COVID is here to stay for some amount of time.
Yes. And I totally agree with the reevaluation period. And I think I stated that in the beginning, because I do want to see what some of these alternate plans that these other school districts are trying, how they're working. And, you know, are they putting their kids at risk by doing that? Because, you know, well, three out of 100,000, is that what you said?
Three of 100,000 was low.
You know, it's a low number. I am, I'm not willing to risk any of our kids to be one of those three. And I know you feel the same way, you all feel the same way. So I totally agree with the reevaluation period. And I think that's really up to you all. I think I would ask for at least two, maybe three weeks, to let those alternate plans play out and work in those districts, and then give me some time to make those phone calls and have those conversations with those superintendents. So, yes.
I have something. I talked to a board member this evening, and they started with the optional. They have 75 kids now that have COVID, and 500 of them, there's 500 that are out because they're quarantined. They're talking, they're, when they have their meeting next week, they're going to talk about the mandate. I am definitely not a mandate person. I, when I was told I had to wear a mask again, it was like, "Oh, no, please, no." But I will tell you one thing. One of those kids in our district, one, would be way too many for me. And we've seen this. And I know all of you out there, "Don't do this and don't do that." I got it from both sides. Let me tell you some heated discussions. Same with the shots. I think if people would just turn the television off, that might help. Now, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be mean, but I love our kids. And if it means, and this is what I was going to ask, if it means just the mandate for a month or just till the first of October, I'm, I'm willing to do, just let's mandate now and then see where it goes. Heck, in 30, or 20 days, things may be different. I wouldn't want to go till Thanksgiving, and things could change in them. But these are our kids we're talking about. Whether they're healthy or they have some issues, these are our kids. I don't have any kids in school. That don't, that doesn't make any difference. I love all kids. And if it means one, saving one life, I'm one. It's just, it's okay.
I just want to add on to the timeframe thing. If we, as we continue to reassess, which we have done for a year and a half now, if we enact a mask mandate and the numbers go down, you can make the connections there, and then allow options again, and the numbers go up, I just, that's a cycle I don't want to put anyone through. However, I think we should obviously continue to reassess the plan and make those decisions. And, you know, if we come to a vote tonight, I just, you know, want to say, my old goal last year and this year was kids safe and kids here, here, in school, not in front of a computer unless we have to do that. And the current, we have, you know, we canceled school. Then we went two days. We had Plexiglas everywhere. We still do almost have it everywhere. We have all these factors that we have reduced, right? We came back to school in person. We came back two days. We came back four days. We came back five days. We try an optional mask policy to see what level of safety is the right. We don't know. There's no magic answer to that question. But right now, for me, not the other six, this vote is about kids being here, in school, learning in front of your teachers. That's it.
And since you brought up Plexiglas, I know some, the parents talked about there was no Plexiglas in classrooms. If you would come and talk to me after the meeting and let me know where I need to look, and, you know, we can take a look at that. We have ordered more and more Plexiglas, but it does take a little time for that to come in. So just let me know where you need us to look, and we'll take a look at that and see if it's there now, or if we need to maybe encourage some teachers to consider that.
Any other comments?
I have four grandkids here, and they want to be here.
That's, that's it.
And since you brought up Plexiglas, I know some, uh, the parents talked about there was no Plexiglas in classrooms. If you would come and talk to me after the meeting and let me know where I need to look, um, and, you know, we can take a look at that. We have ordered more and more Plexiglas, but it does take a little time for that to come in, so just let me know where you need us to look, and we'll take a look at that and see if it's there now, or if we need to maybe encourage some teachers to, to consider that.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I have four grandkids here, and they want to be here. This is, last year did not work for them, and I have one that, uh, has got some issues with asthma, and he can't breathe. He was out of school, he didn't go to school here, but he was out of school a lot last year when they went back, so it's going to be a problem for him. But there's 1,800, more than 1,800 kids here. I just can't see that you can keep, keep them all safe without this. Hopefully you can. I don't know, but I also have two grandkids that have been fully vaccinated, and, you know, to have them have to wear masks seems not right either, but in order to keep everybody safe, I think that's what we're going to have to do, at least, at least, for the time period that they've been talking about. Then, hopefully, things will go back to normal. I'm, I'm going to be in trouble for doing this, because I have a daughter who's absolutely against this, so I just guess I'll be in trouble, but that's the way I feel.
I'm sorry. Uh, another comment from the board, the next item on the agenda is implementation of a mask mandate.
I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of a mask mandate on Tuesday, September 7th, against 21, while students, employees, and visitors on the campuses of the Centenary County Artsy School District during the school hours.
Second.
Before we vote, could we add to that, um, for 30 days or till the 1st of October?
Can we amend that?
Can we amend that to, to say that?
I, I guess my question there is, are we going to continue to vote on it at every meeting?
Well, I would just think until we see where it goes, because we're not just now talking about COVID, we're talking about the variant that affects the kids. So if it means that to me, I, I'm willing to vote every month.
Dr. Flee, you, uh, agreed to reassess this?
Yes.
I think every month at the board meeting, we could, we'll have the numbers.
Yes.
Not only the positivity rate, but also the quarantine rate, um, and we could absolutely review that at the board meeting. Is that, I don't know if that's sufficient, Mrs. Diesel?
Well, one, one thought that I had had earlier was, especially at the elementary level, if, before we, you know, jump into a mandate at this point, if we implemented all, many other mitigating strategies, you know, more Plexiglas, better social distancing, I mean, I'm hearing sometimes we're socially distanced, but many times we're not, like true social distancing, um, also wearing masks. There's such a thing in my mind as part-time. I mean, yes, if you're in the hallway walking as a big group, you're in a large auditorium, you're on the school bus, I, I don't have a problem with masks at all there, but seven, seven hours a day, all day long, for small children, I, I, you can tell, I struggle with that. I, I think we don't know the long-term effects of, of what that is doing to our kids, and I also think that because, again, when we look at the word properly worn mask, they're, they're dirty, they're gaping open, they're under their nose half the time, I mean, I just don't know if seven, eight hours a day of masking with kiddos, do we know the outcome of that?
Well, our elementary children in particular, since you brought that up, they don't wear them seven hours a day. Um, I'll start with pre-K, because I know Rachel brought that up. Um, they wear them in the hallways with large groups, but in the classroom, they do not.
The pre-Ks don't have to?
Yes, because they're fidgeting, they're playing with them, they're, they're, they're just spreading germs.
And the rule would be for, uh, coming, for them?
That's what we did last year, and I would see us doing that again.
Okay.
Um, elementary, mainly in the hallways, um, there are some risk in the classroom, you know, because while we may have a table like this where four kids sit, it's, it's wider, um, the Plexiglas goes this way across the table just fine, but it's not big enough this way. Um, so the child, like if I was the positive case, the individual sitting next to my left, the Plexiglas doesn't come back far enough, and it's just the make of the Plexiglas, so that child, if we both weren't wearing a mask, would have to quarantine. So there's still some of that, but, uh, we have, in the past, not traditionally had our elementary children, or even our middle school and high school children, wear masks all day long, every day. Um, like you said, it just, it, they have to have breaks, just like we have to have breaks from them.
Do, currently, are the kids wearing them in PE?
In PE? No, they do not wear them in PE.
No, no recess, no PE?
They never...
Even if PE's in the gym?
I don't know about last year. Recession, they do not wear them at recess, because they're outside.
Right. Uh, but they do wear them in PE?
In the hallway, and probably, like, if you're thinking about elementary PE.
Right, in the gym.
In the hallway, going from the gym to the classroom, or outside, coach takes them outside, our coaches take them outside a lot.
Okay, because they're allowed to take them out in the gym while they're...
Yes, we, uh, we don't have our high school athletes wear them at practices, um, and we, I saw firsthand last year teams that played with them, and they may start like this at the beginning of a game, but by the end of, like, a basketball or volleyball game, we call them chin diapers, um, it was down below their chin, and it really wasn't doing anything, so after seeing some games like that, it, it's like, there is no reason to have an athlete put that mask on, have that breathing barrier, so...
And do you happen to have any data on what surrounding districts are doing right now?
Um, I know Kingston is going to have a special board meeting next week and probably implement a mask mandate. They are seeing, um, a lot of positive cases. She hasn't really said if it's in school or in the community, but they have a lot of positive cases, which is requiring a massive amount of quarantines. I think their attendance, it was yesterday or today, was around 70, 70% because of all the quarantines. Um, the other M-triple-A schools, there are some that are discussing a meeting probably in the next week, maybe, and there are others that, they live in a community and have a school board that would not support it, so they're just not going to go there until, um, they get into a situation where they have lots of quarantines. Jefferson County, uh, met with their county health department and yesterday published an alternative plan, um, so all of the Jefferson County school districts are following this alternative plan that came out yesterday. Um, as far as mask requirements in, in Jefferson County, I don't know, I don't keep up with much of that.
Unless they change, don't put it, which is herculaneum.
Herculaneum, okay.
That could have changed, yeah.
So there is a motion and a second on the table. If we were to take a vote on that as far as a mask mandate, it would also mean we would vote on it again at our next board meeting with new numbers, and the things that, uh, Ms. Diesel discussed as far as the implementation of the mask, if you're in gym class, things of that nature, you're passing in the hallway versus sitting at a desk where you're three to six foot apart, those would all be part of the rules associated with this mandate.
Yes, we need to work on the Plexiglas. We need some time to do that.
But, uh, as far as wearing the mask, if you're distanced, would you be okay to take it down?
Correct.
Well, and I, I, I believe because last year, the children, if we followed this rubric, a rubric similar to this last year, because two kiddos were both masked, then they, there was less quarantining going on, correct?
Correct.
But what we don't really know is how many asymptotic kids were running around, because you just don't know, right? We know that at the elementary level especially, there's a lot of kids who don't exhibit symptoms, and, and that's just nothing we can control. We, I, I don't, I'm not saying there's anything we can even do about that, but, um, I guess what I'm trying to say, I think it's unclear, the data, there's no data to prove were more kids in school last year because they wore masks, because the mask kept them safe, or were they in school because they had masks on and they didn't have to quarantine? You know what I mean? Because of these, of these, um, how many kids do we have out? 93 quarantines, 15 of them have virus. So when we do this masking, we're keeping kids in school, not because we really know if the COVID numbers go up or down, it's just that the quarantine numbers go down.
Yes.
You know? I'm not sure if we're really changing the spread of COVID or not.
No, but we're keeping kids here.
We're keeping kids in school.
I agree.
Yes.
Which is, I feel like, the objective of our meeting tonight.
At least one, yes.
So...
So, the question about adding the two-week period to the motion, can you do that, or you just have to?
I believe, Mr. Bosler, we'd either have to amend his motion, or we would just have to take a vote.
Can we just, each school board meeting, just bring, uh, another motion, a recommendation to us of COVID?
We can.
And, and, you know, and then we can leave the motion right as it is, and just each school board meeting, give us a recommendation at that time.
Okay, um, yes, so I, I believe Mr. Bova, I agree with what he's saying. You can vote on the current, um, motion, as is, or if you want to amend it, you have to vote no on the current motion and then make another motion. Does that make sense? Because it's, the motion already has a first and a second.
However, the motion as it stands would involve us going over this at each board meeting for the foreseeable future, and the plan of when a mask has to be on versus doesn't. That was part of the reopening plan to begin with.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes, so I will offer this assurance, if this is what you're looking for. Um, we have a regularly scheduled board meeting for Tuesday, September 21st, so I, I assure you and I promise that Dr. Taylor and I will bring you some more data, and, uh, this, um, mask issue will be on that agenda, so we can revisit the topic and you can decide whether, whether you, what you decide to do with it.
Are there any other comments before we do a roll-call vote on the motion that's on the table?
One last one. I, I have talked hardly at any board meetings, but I make it for tonight. Um, just to clarify, what we approve tonight will be revisited on the 21st.
Yes, that's what I promise you.
Okay.
And I promise to parents.
The motion is not for the entire year.
No.
But at this point in time, for this name forward, until it can come up again, if you recall the policy, is that clear?
That is, that is correct. It doesn't, yes, it doesn't say that, but that's the assurance that I'm giving everyone. It will be on the agenda for September 21st.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll-call vote. There's a motion and a second on the table to enact a mask mandate effective Tuesday, September 7th at all buildings. David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Jerrilyn Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirshner?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all very much. Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.